...of the town of Asouias, Monday, July 18th, 2016, at 4:00 PM in council chambers. So I will call the meeting to order and I will read the statement of the chair. The, this public hearing is convened, before I start, there is, this is being filmed on Granicus, which is a live feed that we have up there, unedited, just so that you know that we do not allow any other recording or filming of, of anything in here, right now, just to be, make sure you're aware of that. This public hearing is convened pursuant to Section 464 of the Local Government Act, RSBC 2015, to allow the public to make representation to council respecting matters contained in zoning amendment bylaw number 1085 dot 99, 2016. Every person present who believes that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaws shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard, respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaws. None of you will be discouraged or prevented from making your views known. However, it is important that you restrict your remarks to matters contained in the proposed bylaw. When speaking, please proceed to the microphone and commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. If they wish, members of council may ask you questions following your presentation. However, the function of council at this public hearing is to listen to you rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. In accordance with the council procedure bylaw, presentations by members of the public shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes each. If a person has additional information that he is unable to provide within that timeframe, he shall be given further opportunity to address council after all other interested members of the public have been heard a first time. Please refrain from applause or other expressions of emotion during this public hearing so that we may ensure as impartial a hearing as possible. After this public hearing is adjourned, council members will not speak to the public on this matter until after the matter has been dealt with at a public meeting. After this public hearing has concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the presentations made at this hearing. So confirmation of advertising and posting requirements, notice of this public hearing was given in accordance with the Local Government Act and the Community Charter by distributing the notices follows. Publishing in two consecutive editions of the Asouias Times on July 6th and July 13th, 2016. Placing the notice on the bulletin boards in the Town Hall and Planning and Development Services Department on July 6th, 2016. And posting on the town's website, July the 5th, 2016, and distributed via E-News on July 5th, 2016. So the, the, both of the, the notices in the paper were, were shown, and I have copies of those if anybody needs to confirm that. And now I'm going to ask for a report number four from our Director of Planning, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, and good afternoon, everybody. On July 4th, council gives two readings to zoning bylaw amendment number 18599 to 16, marijuana operations, and set a public hearing date for 4:00 PM, July 18th, in council chambers, which you are now attending. Because this report includes some new information submitted to council earlier regular meeting, but will be presented again at the public hearing. Currently, persons may only buy a limited amount of marijuana for their own medical use from a license store through the mail, while new upcoming federal regulations are anticipated to open up the option of marijuana retail stores. The attached zoning bylaw amendment is designed to manage the interim period until the new regulations arrive and council can respond with a long-range and community-based zoning approach for marijuana retail stores. On June 6th, council requests the staff to seek legal advice on how to deal with increasing business interest in marijuana retail stores and to survey how other municipalities may be responding to this challenge. Legal opinion, we received importantly distinguished between two forthcoming federal initiatives for expanding public access to marijuana products. First, it is expected sometime this August that the federal government will bring in new liberalizing medical marijuana regulations that could legalize retail outlets for sales to medical recipients, subject to conditions and local control. This is distinct, distinct from the broader legalization of marijuana for recreational users expected later next year. Our lawyer makes two timely and useful recommendations how we should respond in the short term to the upcoming retail regulations. First, we should await until we see what the upcoming federal regulations say before we put a long-term policy regulatory regime in place, otherwise we will likely have to adjust after the fact. Second, as a short-term interim measure, we should put in place an exclusion zoning bylaw text amendment with the effect of expressly preventing all marijuana operations across town, except for quote "medical marijuana grow operations," which are already allowed with council discretion and conditions in our M1 general industrial zone. Following the second recommendation and with legal advice from our lawyer on appropriate wording, staff prepare the attached zoning bylaw text amendment to which council have given first and second readings since now going for public comment. And earlier today at the regular meeting, I did circulate some inputs that we got from other municipalities as to, as to the kind of interest that they're facing from the business community and what, how they're responding. Implications. A, community. A long-term and community-based approach to marijuana retail stores should balance their customers' convenience with land use compatibility for all residents and businesses, organizational. During the recent period of regulatory uncertainty, Planning and Development Services have held the line on bylaw enforcement by pulling resources away from other priority demands in our time. Staff will support council in developing a long-term approach. Budget, money spent for received legal services. Significant dates, time is of the essence for the proposed zoning bylaw amendment. The upcoming federal regulations will probably increase interest in opening retail stores. Staff proposes to reduce council timelines by combining third reading of the marijuana operations into a special meeting with airport lot rezoning, that was another report earlier, as proposed in the senior planners' report we presented today. And in fact, council did, did, did agree to, to hold a, a third reading on, on the 9th at 3:30, and any member of the public is totally welcome to attend that as well. Recommendation, staff recommends moving ahead expeditiously with zoning bylaw amendment number 18599 to 16 for the following reasons. Allow council and staff to focus time and energy on developing a long-range and community-based zoning approach to marijuana retail stores without distractions from short-term pressures. B, reinforce current bylaw enforcement offers and cooperative RCMP support to control any proliferating pressures from opening illegal outlets. Currently, staff refuse business licenses for retail outlets because they are, they are illegal under federal law. But in a time of uncertainty and questioning around government intentions, it would, it also help emphasizing that the town does not condone retail outlets until further notice. C, one of our lawyers' reasons for recommending an interim ban on retail marijuana operations is by its very essence a zoning bylaw issue. That is the need to head off potential disputatious legal challenges that when council does put a new planning regime in place, any existing outlets could claim to be illegal as opposed to illegal non-conforming use. Such challenges could gain credence, for instance, if the town's current position on retail outlets is seen as uncertain and possibly granting tacit approval. And very importantly, C, add D, clear town messaging should help businesses with their short and long-range planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. So the, the first thing we're going to do is identify any correspondence received, and, and I do have one here which I will read. Is there only one, Mrs. Hilsen, that we know of? Okay. So this was sent on July the 6th. "Thank you, council, for your approach to this emotionally loaded divisive topic. I recently relocated to Asouias from Grand Forks because Asouias' elected council and mayor seem to have their heads screwed on right, and you listen to the wishes of the city's citizens. Under the influence of Grand Forks' previous mayor, Brian Taylor, dubbed the marijuana mayor, and his henchmen on council," this was not written by us, I'm only reading what was sent to us, "despite the wishes of the city's citizens, the city has been and continues to be subjected to emotionally charged tyranny and imposition of the marijuana culture, whether the citizens like it or not. Please continue with your reasoned, legal, sensible approach on this topic. An appreciative citizen of Asouias, Sylvia Treptow." So now I'm going to go back to public presentations, and any of you that have, have signed up for this will be allowed to speak. You will, please come up to the microphone and you will be allowed five minutes to speak. Thank you very much. And if, as you heard, if you would like to, if you do not have enough time, I'm going to stop you after five minutes, and then I will certainly allow you to come up again if you have further information, after everyone else has spoken. So first on our list is Grant Bruce. Would you please come forward and state your name and, and address? Thank you.
My name is Grant Bruce. My address is Unit 26511 Main Street, Assouias. I'm here today in regards to this whole matter. Again, you guys all clearly know my name, you know that I am the current owner of the franchise of Starbuds in Asouias here. We have since between June 6th and now distanced ourselves with, with Starbuds as a franchise, myself and my business partners, based on some, some inconsistencies with what they told us they had approached the town of Asouias with already, previously, and had paperwork in place. We have since then ceased all ties and business relations with them. However, I still am a proponent of this industry, and I still feel as though I am someone who can speak to you on a professional basis, based on the fact that I've been using medical marijuana since I was 15 years old. And I'm not going to lie to you about it, I have epilepsy. I use it on a daily basis. In order for me to live my life, I have to. It's not like it's a debate. It's either that or I have to take phenobarbital, which is a heavy opiate, and that just makes me dopey, and I can't, as dumb as this sounds, it makes me dopey. Opiates make me dopey. Marijuana doesn't. Marijuana helps me live my life. As far as the debate on this bylaw, I'd just like to make it quick and simple. I'm not opposed to any bylaw in this town. As far as moving forward with a bylaw, I'd like to see some, some professional approach to this. Again, like, any other criterion, and again, I'll leave this for you guys to look over. I have many copies of it. We adhere to this criterion. If a little child were to walk into one of our facilities, they'd open the door, there'd be absolutely no exposure to a marijuana product, to a smell, nothing, not to a high person, anything. All of this stuff is medicine. It's an access center. The first thing you would see when coming in is just like this, you'd see a desk with a woman sitting behind it, for a man, no discretion there. So going behind that closed door, you'd have to prove form of diagnosis, which mean you'd have a neurological disorder such as myself on the high end of the spectrum, and on the low end of the spectrum, you'd have nerve, like a fibromyalgia, osteoarthritis, certain, you know, arthritis-related issues, and that's on the low side of things, just for pain relief. People use this. Again, I can give you absolute numbers, not just guessing, these are absolute. Ninety percent of the Starbuds membership is over the age of 50. There's very few people that come in between the age of 19 and 25 and are actually accepted into this program. You have to have a form of diagnosis, you have to have an ailment deemed curable, or not really curable, but I guess to, to help you, to help you with your life. And it's certain things like that that I just think that the bylaw, moving forward, if you set up a bylaw, you say, okay, you know, you have your standards. Squamish is a prime example. If you look into Squamish right now, they just set up a stance on bylaws. $5,000 is the yearly business license, I'm fine with that. They have to have a criminal record check, I'm fine with that as well. They have, you have to adhere to a security, you have to have a security contract with a security company. We already have that. You have to have a wall between the product and the people when they walk through the door. We already have that. With another marijuana, again, and no, no competition in any way, I didn't know there was another medical marijuana-related facility in town. Had I, I would have been accessing my medicine there in the time that we were setting up our facility. So being, again, again, in Victoria, another law, you have to be 300-plus meters away from another medical marijuana establishment, we adhere to that. You have to be more than 300 meters from a school, we're more than a kilometer. We, we sort of zoned ourselves in a weird way, but at the same time, I think this is perfect criterion for a bylaw, I'm not opposed to it in any way. Let's work out a, let's work out a lit license fee and let's, let's move forward. Again, we're going to employ people from the town of Asouias. People that live here year-round will have year-round employment. A lot of employers in this community are seasonal at best. You get four or five months of employment here and then you're done, you're laid off, you're a picker, you're here a few months a year and that's it. We'll be willing to employ two people year-round, and accountants, and legal teams, all that stuff. We have liability, all the insurances, we have everything, I can provide, anything, any transparency you'd like, I can provide it, where the marijuana comes from. To push this and to push out retail outlets, just recently was a perfect storm, the Canada Post, the whole, that whole system went down. I couldn't access my marijuana that I needed, I simply couldn't. I had to drive to West Bank to a dispensary and pick it up, because I couldn't get it through the mail. And it's inconsistent at best. It doesn't, as crazy as this sounds, I need a sativa marijuana to regulate my epilepsy. indica marijuana doesn't do it. I know maybe to you guys marijuana is marijuana, but there's so many variances to this, it's scientifically proven. I just like some, I just like for you guys to really consider this in, in a serious manner. Again, I'm a father of two little boys, I have a life.
Well, thank you very much. We do appreciate you coming and, and speaking to us. Is there, Councilor Rhodes, would you like to ask some questions?
Thank you, Mayor McCullough. Our bylaw that we have in front of us right now is primarily a zoning matter. If I was to ask you a question, and don't feel compelled to answer it if you don't feel comfortable with it. Ideally, where do you think that this type of operation should be located? Is it a main street business? Is it an industrial park? Or is it where you started off a few weeks ago, or that kind of thing?
To be fair-
Just what your opinion is on it.
Right. We spent probably a month in this community walking around. There's a facility, there's multiple facilities that are open for lease in this community. Not one of them was deemed workable other than the facility that we chose. And again, we approached Mr. Locke, the owner of the property. He's 100% proponent for this. He sent the other, the other tenants in the Cottonwood Plaza a memo stating, you know, this is what's going on, just want to give you guys a heads up. We haven't had one negative opinion come through that door, ever. I've never had one negative person come in there and like, you're ruining my town, and like, that's not the intentions of us in any way whatsoever. We're trying to give a secure, discreet access to someone, non-invasively, in a secure location. You access your medicine, you take it home, you sign a contract stating that you will go home and enjoy it in the closed doors of your own home, you're not imposing it on anybody. And again, if, if you're on, my opinion, if you're on Main Street, you're exposed. If you had, if you're on a back-street, back-alley-type premise, you're going to have children, you're going to have youth. And again, by, by pushing this type of facility out of town, you're just giving the black market an open book, because there's not one black market dealer that's going to ask a kid for ID. I will. And I won't give it to him unless he has a proven doctor's note to back it up.
Do you have another one?
I think it would be important to, to have an understanding of where we're at with our legislation right now. Many of the criteria about being so far away from a school and located, that is not applicable in our community as yet. We're very much in the, in the bases, so to choose a location based on criteria in another community is not really where we're at right now. This is our community-
I understand that.
And that's why, that was the purpose of my, my question, that if we do move forward, where do you think is the best location for it?
In my opinion, anywhere across the channel and, you know, I, that's just my opinion. Again, I would have to think, this is just my own opinion, I would have to think that anywhere on the initial main drag right there is just too, too much traffic from youth, too many highly accessed places by youth, and it's just, unfortunately, I don't really know if I'd want my 13-year-old son down there messing around.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, we appreciate your-
I'll just leave this here, please.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mark Conlan.
Hello, I'm Mark Conlan. I come from 3083 Weber Road in West Colonna. I thank your worship and councillors for providing this opportunity. As a local organizer for Sensible BC, which is the single largest Canadian organization advocating changes to our cannabis laws, I've been following how your community has been responding to the appearance of medical marijuana dispensaries within your jurisdiction. After having reviewed the report prepared by your Director of Planning and Development Services, I'm compelled to raise concerns that impact upon a charter of rights protected group of Canadian citizens, that group being medical cannabis patients. While the report background and overview does provide some clarity concerning the procedural status of current and anticipated federal legislation, the second recommendation flowing from the overview, that of prohibiting all marijuana operations, will not serve the residents of Asouias in any beneficial manner. Like patients represented by this council, I am not adequately served by the existing legal means of acquiring medical cannabis through mail-order suppliers. Federal law does not allow for the type of professional interaction that a patient has a right to expect from any medicinal supplier. No description of the specific efficacy of individual strains is allowed, there is no opportunity to discuss symptoms with medical professionals, and there is no opportunity to even look at the medicine prior to purchase. These are things that any other Canadian with a recognized medical requirement has a legal right to expect. That's why dispensaries and their patients are challenging existing federal laws as being discriminatory. It's on this point that your legal advisors make no mention. Disregarding it does not negate it. Civil disobedience, in fact, is being validated through successive Canadian legal decisions on this matter. I ask, how does closing medical marijuana dispensaries serve the citizens of Asouias? In short, it doesn't. The cannabis sold in medical dispensaries does not come from other countries. It's all BC sourced, with much of it from local suppliers. So that means a dispensary closure, rather than reducing cannabis access, just puts it back onto the streets and into schools. I note with concern that the original report, report included as an implication such inflammatory and speculative commentary as a proliferation of marijuana outlets could seriously impact the attractiveness of our downtown and other public areas, with consequent repercussions for the health of other businesses, our tourist industry, and retirement market, and the development of real estate sectors. And here, I thought reformatist madness was an old joke. Seems not so much in this report. As both a retiree and a tourist, I beg to differ with the director's report. And I'm a typical dispensary patient. I'm a 60-year-old retired letter carrier. After having delivered mail for 20, for 33 years with Canada Post, I was authorized for medical retirement through my employer's insurer due to degenerative arthritis in my neck and spine in October 2010. It was during the process of determining the nature and extent of my illness that my personal physician authorized my medicinal use of marijuana. This was based using the rationale that two specialists had confirmed the diagnosis, that the prognosis for ongoing deterioration was demonstrated, and that conventional drug therapy could not offer comparable, negative-side-effect-free relief. That's when I first used the services of a dispensary. It was and remains a huge leap forward from accessing black-market marijuana. I personally am a member of six dispensaries. I know the owners and managers of most of them and interact with them routinely. I still have to show my membership card every time. In order to get a membership card, I had to indicate a medical requirement and proof of age. I've gone through a virtually identical process at every dispensary I've visited. Think about it. When has law enforcement ever had that degree of control over the sale and distribution of marijuana in our communities? In a word, never. Here's the bonus. The marijuana being sold in dispensaries is funneled out of the black market. That's an incredible amount taken off your streets and away from your kids. I include for your consideration the position stated within the February 24th, 2016 Federal Court of Canada decision, commonly called the Allard Decision, regarding the charter access right for patients. This decision struck down the federal government's decision to disallow patients the right to grow their own cannabis, but went on to speak to the issue of dispensaries. And I quote, "Although dispensaries were not a focus of the party submission, I find Ms. Shaw's evidence," Ms. Shaw being a witness, "to be extremely important as dispensaries are at the heart of cannabis access. Particularly," she states, "that the pronouncement of the proposed regulation consultation was denied and a number of dispensaries closed in 2012 and 2013 due to the potential that the new system would now serve their membership. However, in March 2014, the number of dispensaries was estimated at 36. Over the last year, this number has increased exponentially and is now estimated at around 103 across Canada, and I'm sure that that's increased since this came out. Although not legal under any past or previous medical marijuana regulations, current trends in dispensary growth suggest a connection between the restrictions to access under the MMPR, the current system, and the need for patients to obtain the medical marijuana from illicit sources," end quote. Please do not make the error in judgment that others have made in that this is a fringe issue affecting only a small vocal segment of our population. I am in every sense of the term a member of the general public. I am strongly supportive, supportive of regulated professional dispensaries in our communities. I hope that sound judgment prevails in your deliberations and that local patients are provided with safe, knowledgeable access to the medicine. Once again, I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Conlan. Is there anyone have any questions of this gentleman? Thank you very much. Next on our list is Tiffany Godwin.
Hi, this is-
Bryn Jones.
My name is Bryn Jones. I am from 145 Heldencourt, Central Okanagan. But I'm here as a representative of some of the companies that either do or hope to deal with dispensaries that one day either are or will be allowed in your community. And we felt it's important to speak up and to let you know that there is someone here that can communicate with you. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Today, I hope to enlighten you and inform you, and feel free to contact me at any point beyond this for further discussion. My name is Bryn Jones. I'm here as a representative for the cannabis and hemp supplement industries. I have contacts across Canada and the Americas who work closely with us to provide you with access to some of the information I'm about to share. As we vote for our civic leaders, we hope to represent the best practices and form decisions to guide our communities, and we thank you for all that you do. But unfamiliar terminology and a lack of understanding are the cornerstones of an 80-year-old war on drugs, restricting our access to information and leaving us with a void that we discussed today. I recently sat with the principal of an Okanagan secondary school to discuss the cannabis prescriptions. A family had approached the school with a choice, allow this medicine or face a possible battle. The doctors and the patients had chosen this medication because it had shown success in reducing seizures, allowing the youth to attend school, and live an otherwise normalized life. The active ingredient, cannabidiol, or CBD, a non-intoxicating compound found in all cannabis or hemp plants, available only through prescriptions from doctors. The administrator was not concerned about the prescription, but his lack of understanding, poor access to information, and restricted number of acceptable options under the current system. The option, a street-based, untested, and as we see often tainted products. But there is a better system, one based on science and complementary medicine. Many confusing acronyms such as THC, CBD, CBG can make it seem impossible to decipher. Here is where the trained and accountable professionals come to the pictures and some of the companies that I represent. There are now reputable and often doctor-backed companies, information databases, and collectives to attain information all about the benefits and possible negative side effects of cannabis medicinal regimes. Not all businesses are the same. Do not let news reports of shady business practices fog your opinion. Each location may have a focus on recreational, medicinal, or spiritual options. As such, each should be handled on a one-on-one basis, each to stand the merits of your community and the standards placed within the industry. Cooperation with the community and local government, doctors, and police are essential for patient safety. Working in opposition only causes harm, crime, and dissent. For example, in your community. Recently, you were faced with street-level lasing of fentanyl, a known opioid and addictive narcotic, found in some of the common street-level products here. The industry instantly responded by providing current testing results of all products provided to your community, as well as access to, access to a spokesman, myself, to allow communication and accountability. We want to hear your voices. We want to hear your community. We want to provide options to reduce crime, addiction, and curb the rampant use of opioids. We want to provide options to reduce crime, addiction, and curb the rampant use of opioids. Under a regulated system, any outlet that sold unsafe or tainted product would be accountable and possibly criminally prosecuted. Last but not least, where will I buy my child's medications now? Thank you, Mayor and council members, for your time and respect in this manner. I hope to be an informative tool for you now and in the future.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Anybody have a question, Mr. Jones? Councilor Rhodes?
Thank you again. I'm hoping I don't sound like a parrot by asking this question over and over again. I have two questions. The fentanyl that you brought up, are you talking that it was in marijuana, or?
It has been found in several products in this community, including marijuana and marijuana extracts that were bought from the street. I'm speaking from medical professionals that told me that.
Okay, and second question, what about location? What is your opinion on that? Is it a Main Street business?
I am not a position to state operations or locations, only that there is a viable industry willing to stand up, communicate, be responsible to the city council, responsible to RCMP, and follow whatever guidelines you do choose, but we felt it was important to give you that option, to say that it is here, and to give you more information and more access to it, so that you can represent your community in the best ways that the council feels.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And absolutely, if you have, if you have any reports that you have written, if you would like to give them to Mrs. Hilsen, we would be happy to take them. Next is David Follman.
I just wanted to, oh, David Follman, I'm a resident of Thirty Finch Crescent in Asouis. I just wanted to speak very briefly in support of the bylaws that's been presented. I believe that it's the correct way to go, is to keep illegal dealers out of the city and not give them the facade of being businessmen until such time as the laws are changed by the federal government. I feel that if you change a bylaw and allow dealers to come into the city and pretend to be businesses in the meantime, you'll be creating a huge problem for yourself, as well as for law enforcement in the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Nixon Zay.
I'm Nixon Zay for four two Y, four two five W P D A. I actually just, I just want to talk a little bit about, I'm sure you all know that we were the founders of the Number Club, which is a medical marijuana compassion club that was here. A little bit about our story, why we started it. I know Grant said that he, he's in it because he uses medical marijuana for himself. For me personally, I don't use marijuana, marijuana products whatsoever, none. My daughter, my middle daughter, sorry, is schizophrenic, and from the time that she's been little, she's been on opiates and narcotics and antipsychotics. And I got into the medical marijuana industry and I started my, I'm learning about it and researching for my daughter's sake. And for me personally, if I knew then what I know now, that could have helped my daughter, she might not be a self-medicating drug addict on the street that we don't get to see anymore. If I had a place like a dispensary with educated people, if you walk into my compassion club, if you walk into Grant's, if you walk into any dispensary, we are educated people. We are not street-level drug dealers who just give you a bag of weed and send you on your way. We're not that. We are educated. And as far as your question, where do places like these belong? We were on Main Street for six months, and the sergeant is quoted saying that we've never had a complaint, there's never been a report against us, there's never, it's wherever the town is going to allow it, those people have to conform. We were running for six months, and you guys all say that you didn't know that we were there. You can run discreetly. Our landlord to our building knows what we were doing. She was in full support of it. There's businesses, our neighboring businesses, we made sure that they knew, there was never any problems with us. We're not street-level drug dealers. We're not. And as far as the members to our society, I work with doctors, doctors in the community. Asouis doctors filled out those forms for people to come pick up their prescriptions from, from us. The majority of our clients, we had over a hundred members in that six months, the majority of that hundred members is over sixty years old and female and from Asouis community. Half of what we sold is CBD products. They don't get you, give you the psychoactive high that smoking pot does that unaware people don't even know about. It's medical. It's all medical. I just wanted to say that we're not, we're not drug dealers, and we're not in it to make a buck. We were a compassion club. The majority of the products we gave, we gave for free because people can't afford them. We're not drug dealers, and we're here to serve a purpose. And whether it be Grant's, or whether it be us, or neither one of us, this is needed in your community. It's needed. And whether it's for the seniors, or the children, or, there's so much that you just have to learn about before you just say that it shouldn't be here. That's all I have to say.
That's, that's okay. You're obviously very emotional about it. We understand. Does anybody have any, any questions? Thank you very much. Next is Janice St. Louis.
My name's Janice St. Louis. I live at nine four zero seven Spartan Drive in Asouis. I'm not here to question the merits of medicinal marijuana at all. In fact, I welcome that we finally will have some rules about it and regulations. As a child of a parent who has been on controlled substances for about fifty years, she's been on all different kinds of narcotics, I'm going to experiment with cannabis oil. And so I, I'm not discrediting any of this at all, but I would like our town to just wait, wait for more information from the federal government, what kinds of regulations they're proposing this summer, and go from there. So I do support the bylaw, as long as there is enforcement. You know, there's a lot of issues to go with, with prescribing any kind of medication. For example, my mother's on ten different medications, antipsychotics, antidepressants, anti, all kinds of things. She was on morphine, belladonna, opium, all prescribed by a medical doctor, different medical doctors. So, but the interaction of these are, are something that it takes an educated pharmacist to understand, side effects, and how they interact with each other. So I have a lot to learn myself about medicinal marijuana, and I think, I think a lot of us do. I also understand pharmacies are interested in providing the distribution as well. So as far as zoning is concerned, I support an interim zoning and wait till we get more information. There's proposed regulations I've seen from Vancouver that, that would make sense to me as well, and I don't disagree that we could have storefront operations if, if everyone is, is in agreement with the, the law will be. And that's my opinion.
Thank you very much. Is there any, any questions? No. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, who has not had, not signed up? Yes. You didn't sign on the list, so come up and give your name, please, and-
Hi, my name's Darren Fidler. I'm from Kelowna, B.C., later fourteen sixty-seven Aspen Court. I've been following the, the whole controversy, the whole story behind cannabis, and it has an amazing story. And really, when you look into it, you find out that it's really full of a lot of lies and misinterpretations. And, and really, what needs to happen right now with this whole industry, especially with legalization coming forward, is more education and more questions coming from people in power that really don't understand the whole question. I got two books here right now that I have probably found some of the best information from. One is called The Great Book of Hemp. That covers both hemp as the product and, and food, but also the medicine side of it. In terms of any questions you might have on the CBD's, THC, or what the cannabinoids will do, I have Cannabis Pharmacy, which has basically answered every single question that I've ever wanted to, to find about that. In terms of zoning, you have to ask yourself some questions in terms of, well, wha- 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 what does it relate to right now? What's the closest? And the way I see it, it's either tobacco or alcohol. And you look at the way those two are handled right now, alcohol, you're not going to open up a booze store or a beer store right next to a school. That makes sense. Tobacco, which kills way more people than anybody, you have that at your corner store. So really, yeah, we are left open with a lot of questions right now in terms of what the federal government's going to do with their laws, but really, in terms of what we don't know is, is really more important right now. And, and if you have any questions, I definitely, I have a business called GW Marasuticals, and we are there to answer any questions that you might have. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who was missed and who would, would like to speak? We certainly, do I have to call this three times? Okay. Sorry, I think I did that the last. Did you want to speak first? Go ahead.
I mean, I guess, would it be okay if I told a personal story and an opinion? Is this-
I'm not, I'm not sure. You'd have to ask. I don't think that, from our point of view, I think we're just here to listen as council, yeah. So I need to ask for the second time if there's anyone else who would like to, would like to make a presentation? And for the third time, is there anyone else? I just, I just want to, to thank you all for coming and providing this, your, your stories, your information. Please understand that we are dealing with just two things here. One is a zoning bylaw. Where would we, when this storefront for medicinal marijuana seems to be coming in the month of, of August, from the federal government? At the moment, we cannot issue business licenses because it is illegal in terms of federal law. When it does come in, and we anticipate that it will, we would like to be prepared, and this is why we have looking at a zoning bylaws. Where would we feel that, that it would be the best place to, to, to have it here? I'm sorry, I can't take questions on it. So those are the two things that we will be dealing with. Whether marijuana is good or bad, has, really doesn't have anything to do with the, with the issue at hand, and, and as a matter of fact, most of us are, are quite sympathetic to the, the use of marijuana first, certainly for specific purposes, medic- medical purposes for sure. So we do understand that, and we do appreciate all of you taking the time to, to come out and, and talk to us today. We will take that information, and we will deal with it at a further meeting. Okay? So what I need is a, Mrs. Hilsen, I need a move, a motion to adjourn the meeting? No? You don't have to do that? Okay. Well, thank you very much, everyone.